Statistics for you. So the Calaveras Animal Services truly needs dog and cat volunteers, especially cat volunteers. We're down quite a few.
Allegiance.
Twenty-four.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Now you're good.
Okay. Good morning and welcome back to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for October eighth, 2024. If you are able, will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Supervisor Paul Gorg, welcome back. Will you lead us this morning?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin with staff announcements.
Do we, are we reporting out closed session?
Please, would you please report out in closed session.
Closed session will be powered out for today, October eighth. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference at legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Greer et al. versus Calaveras County, Calaveras County Superior Court case number 18, CV 43460. Forward action, no reportable action taken. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference at legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Forward action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to staff announcements. Lisa, come on down.
Hi. Good morning. Chair of Board of Supervisors, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. I heard that you missed me last board meeting.
We did.
So I have a few announcements, so I promise not to go too long. But Focus in Animal Services' last free rabies clinic that we held at the Spence Ranch Feed and Supply was a success. We gave over 153 free rabies vaccines, so that's awesome. We need to protect our community and our animals from rabies. The last free rabies and microchip clinic for this year is October 12th, that's this coming Saturday. Our Dr. Kathleen Gatlin from the Arnold Pet Clinic will be here at the Government Center from nine to 11:30. This event is open to Calaveras residents only. Please come down and visit us. And at the next board meeting, I will have the stats for the year, but I do want to provide some additional statistics for you. So the Calaveras Animal Services truly needs dog and cat volunteers, especially cat volunteers. We're down quite a few, and we need help from our community. We need assistance with our day-to-day operations, and we could not function on our day-to-day operations without our volunteers. So our dog volunteers in 2023 gave over 7,321 hours. That's a lot of hours. And then 2024, for a year to date, they have given over 6,056 hours. Our cat volunteers in 2023 gave over 1,505 hours, and in 2024, 846. And we're only halfway through the year, right? So volunteers assist us in so many ways. They help clean our dog and cat kennels. They socialize our animals and exercise and play and familiarize them with our humans. Landscaping, hosting donation drives, grooving, groving, I like that word, instead of grooming, available animals, educating the public about responsible pet ownership, and attending community events. And also attending adoption events with CCAS, which already has had several events this year. And I have to share a story with everybody, and I know I'm going to see smiles on everybody today, that our last event that we had at the Bret Hart High School, it was Wildlife Cafe event, film event, we had a pup named Flower that had been in our shelter for over 212 days. Now, prior to our adoption events, we send out our media, to our social media, to the newspaper, the adoptable animals that are going to be at the adoption events. So a family happened to see their dog on the social media page, and they called us, and we were at the event, myself, Supervisor Hubbard, he was there as well, so we got to see the happy event, and also Supervisor, former, Marita. And they were able to see the family reunion, if that dog recognized their family, when the family showed up. And that was a success. That is one success for us, and we were just so happy. And those events like that, the adoption events, we will be having continuously, and they just, I mean, really gets to me. So it's a positive influence, it's a positive thing for our community, it's a positive thing for our animals. For the first time, knock on wood, we have four kennels that are open right now. So that is really something that's, for us, it's given our staff a little bit of a break, but it gives us more time to kind of pick up the pieces and see what else we can do and move on to the next project. So they immediately came down and they got Stella, her name is Stella, actually, and she and Stella went home with her human family. So we're always looking for events in our community to participate in our adoption events, and I encourage our community to reach out to us at 209-754-6509 if they have any events that they would be willing to have us participate in. We would also like to thank Focus, our friends at Calaveras Animal Services, who also help us in so many ways, financially, through their support, through their volunteer time. They assist us with our rabies vaccine and microchip clinics, and they offer medical support, including paying for dental care, eye surgery, urine skincare, blood testing and lab work, and other immediate medical services. And Animal Services will try and save every animal that we can. If the animal's fractious, and bifactious means that it's very probably past worth saving, then we have to make some hard decisions, but we know it's the best decision for the animal. But they also help us with our adoption support, spay and neuter programs, direct shelter transfers, shelter enhancements, and also community education. So I'm just kind of pleading with our community, if you're interested, please go to our website and click on the volunteer, and we will get you through that volunteer process, and I'm hoping that we get some volunteers soon here. But that is all I have. If you have any additional questions?
Thank you very much, Lisa.
Thank you.
Doug? Morning.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board, Doug Oliver, Chief Building Official. I'm here today to announce a new program designed to facilitate and speed up the permitting process for residential construction. Building Park is currently offering pre-approved plans on our website. Currently, they are single-family dwellings. Now, this isn't a new idea, this is something that's been slowly growing across California for the last few years, but usually it's focused on accessory dwelling units and trying to catch up with the legislation for that. We took that idea and said, well, why not take it further? So this pre-approved plan process isn't just for accessory dwelling units, you can use these plans for new dwellings on empty lots. The idea is that you take these approved plans, download them off of our website, you go down, get a trust, and that's the beginning. We currently have four mastered, pre-approved plans on our website, designed by KH Drafting, Kevin Horn, and Tim Fennickel of High Point Design. They both have generously donated their time and expertise to provide these plans free to the public. You can use these plans for this process for free. Also, you can use them for a rural dwelling program if there's something you'd like to change and use these plans as the basis for approval. In the right zoning types, you can take these plans, mark up what you want to do differently, we push them through the program the same manner with the limited review. In addition, if you do want to make changes to these plans, we put their name on our race card. You can contact them and say, I would like you to modify the plan. If you want to move the bathroom, you want to put an extra patio on. If the designer who drew that plan modifies it, you bring that data in, we're going to fast-track it the same way as if we'd pre-approved it, because there are minor changes. So that's the beginning. We have, like I said, we have four plans. We look to have two more sets of plans uploaded in the next few months as they get finished by the designer. And then going beyond that, we're offering to the public pre-approval of their plans. So if there is a designer who has a specific design that he sells online or sells to the public, he or she can bring that to our office, we will do the review, approve those plans for this county, and then they have a product they can sell, they can participate in this program. So we're offering that not just for dwellings and ADUs, but also if somebody wants to pre-approve a deck design, pre-approve a garage design, or workshop design that they think is going to be, you know, popular throughout the county, they can be entered into this program. We will keep a database of all of those approved plans, and any of these plans that are approved are good for the entire code cycle. So depending on when you come into the code cycle, they could be pre-approved for up to three years. And then you can revise those plans every code cycle and keep them up to date. So we are very excited about this program, and we're looking forward to seeing how many people take advantage.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Other staff announcements? Rebecca, come on down.
Rebecca Turner, registered voters today. I just want to announce that ballots went out yesterday. The mail does take a few days, so if people don't receive their ballots by Thursday or Friday, I'd start calling to find out what's going on, whether we need to check in with the post offices or check their registration. Stand and dress is open right now. If people want to come vote in person, they can scan their ballot, they don't have to mail it back. On October 26th, Valley Springs will open, the same thing, it's open for returning your ballot, replacing your ballot, or registering to vote. And then November 2nd, McCallum Hill in Angels Camp open, and then of course, November 5th is election day. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Other staff announcements? Is there anybody online?
We have no online requests.
All right. That will conclude staff announcements. We will move on to recognition and acknowledgements. Item number three.
Item three, proclamation, clerk, recorder, archives, and museum. Approve a proclamation recognizing October 2024 as National Archives Month in Calaveras County.
Thank you. I'll pass the gavel to Supervisor Hubbard.
Thank you, Chair. Whereas governments at all levels, businesses and organizations create a multitude of documents in the course of their daily activities, and whereas these documents provide the permanent record and decisions and related actions that have been considered and discussed, and whereas these documents contain the history upon which future actions can be based and provide context explaining the intent of those decisions, and whereas there is a value in appropriately retaining these documents for reference and reliance for future understanding, and whereas archivists and archival repositories provide secure, protected space and ensuring access for future generations. And with that, I'll ask if there's any public comment? Any comment online?
We have no online public comment.
I'll bring it back to the board.
No, it's not public comment, Shannon can be here today.
Come on up.
She was very disappointed she could not be here. She also teaches with Delta and Columbia Community Colleges, and so this semester, she's currently teaching a class right now, but this semester she's teaching modern world history, ancient world history, early US history, and political theory. We are very fortunate to have her on our team with all her knowledge. She wrote a quick synopsis about what's going on in Archives this year, and I'd like to read through it if that's all right. Archives has been working with the State Library, they've received a grant to record all the mining photograph collection that we have and have it digitized for the public. She's also working with MACT Cultural Center for the new museum in Angels Camp, focused on county's native Miwok history. She actually took anything that was not, that was currently in Archives' possession and had anything to do with Miwok history that was not in archival record. For some reason, we had a lot of artifacts there, and that's really not for archive or for us to keep, and the county donated, the board approved it, donated those records to go to the MACT Cultural History Museum in Angels Camp. She has been working with the Sheriff's Office, she identified all the county coroners back to 18th, thirties to our current coroner. She actually did the same for all the Board of Supervisors, if anyone's interested going back, and she's working on the other elected officials as well. She's been assisting graduate students with their graduate theses, one about black midwives in the American West and another about Chinese in the Gold Rush. Developed an internship program, and the internships come in for about six months and help at the Archives, and then it works towards their college credit. We recently received a collection from the Gold Rush era of letters from the Rathke family. They were writing back and forth between their family and Switzerland, and this family actually came from Switzerland specifically to come to our Archives and donate these letters, which was very interesting. And we recently received a collection of records from the Calaveras Woolgrowers Association and from Calaveras Grange dating back to the 1950s. So our Archives actually is renowned in the state for being one of the most complete set of records, so people come from all over the world to come visit the Archives and see what's going on there. And a lot of that's to do with Shannon and her expertise in finding those records and researching. She really has a drive to research, and it's obvious when she goes to help people. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any more?
I just want to comment that I really appreciate all the work that Shannon does, and our Archives truly are a treasure of our community, and it's a draw, as you put forward. Thank you. That'll be motion.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd also just like to put a shout out to Shannon. Encourage you, if you're down on Main Street and that door is open, to just pop your head in, say hello. I'd also like to give a shout out to Noah at the Angels Camp Museum, who's currently updating our Archives, which is very important work. So therefore, be it proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors...
We have to vote.
Sorry. All in favor?
Oh, we already did.
We did?
I'm sorry. Sorry, Marty.
Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Calaveras Board of Supervisors joins federal, state, and local governments, businesses, and organizations throughout the nation in celebrating October 2024 as National Archives Month, as the way to further strengthen and the importance of the preservation of our local history. This is passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, this eighth day of October 2024. Thank you.
Rebecca, you have to come up.
You can't run out yet.
You're getting your picture this time.
Let's try.
I, what?
Let's start this first.
All right, let's move on to item four.
Item four, proclamation, public health. Proclaim October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Calaveras County.
I'll pass the gavel to Supervisor Toffenelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is to proclaim October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Calaveras County. Whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month was established in October 1985 to educate women about breast cancer and pay tribute to those who have been affected by the disease. And whereas breast cancer poses a major public health challenge, and it is estimated that over 310,000 people in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer in 2024. And it says people, it does not necessarily say women, people, so it's not... Whereas an estimated 42,250 people will die from this disease this year. And whereas during Breast Cancer Awareness Month, everyone is encouraged to learn about the risk factors and the importance of early treatment in the fight against breast cancer. And whereas more information on breast cancer is available at www.cancer.gov/types/breast, or by calling the National Cancer Institute at 1-800-422-6237. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control, National Breast and Cervical Cancer Early Detection Program provides free breast cancer screenings for low-income, uninsured, and underinsured women in every state. And whereas increasing public awareness of the value of mammograms is in early detection and treatment of breast cancer can save lives. Is there any board comments? All right, I'll open it to public comments. Any public comments?
Her weight loss? The last public event, last charity event I attended was in 2019, and it was the Breast Cancer Relief Fund, an organization set up in San Francisco many years ago by the gay population, and it was set up as a thank you to women, to lesbian women that took care of them during the AIDS epidemic. They were the first ones, and the only ones at first, to brave an unknown disease and provide financial and physical support to those folks. And as part of the reason I went to that event is I have a tremendous number of gay friends. My family has not been affected by breast cancer, male, the males or the females. But it's important that we all embrace one another and help one another and become aware of the needs we all have. So with that, I commend.
...of cancer death in women in the United States. And I love that everyone here is wearing pink today, thank you. And if you aren't, then October 18th is your second chance, thank you, Gary Mindy, is your second chance to wear pink all day. So if you guys aren't today, October 18th is the day nationally where October is recognizing breast cancer awareness. And so with that, I do encourage everyone who is capable of getting screened to do so and to talk to loved ones about doing so, and encourage everyone else to do so. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Any online?
We have no online public comment.
All right, with that, I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Stoppa, do you have a comment?
Mr. Toffenelli, I just would like to say that you're absolutely right. Breast cancer is not gender-biased, but it's predominantly a woman. I think everyone here, if they don't know someone close, then they've touched someone throughout their life that has been through this fight, and, you know, it's hats off to the ones that have been predominant in that fight, and our hearts go out to the ones that we've lost in the past. And with that, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Other comments?
Just was going to second.
You have a second? Okay. I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is five zero. Therefore, be it resolved that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors proclaims October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Calaveras County. And with that? So do we have? Yes. Public health. Mr. Chair, I would also like to bring up that also October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month also, so maybe we can do something on October 18th for domestic violence.
Twenty-second, David Lee. Twenty-second.
All right, we will move on to public comment. Now, I believe everybody here knows the rules. You have three minutes. If it's related to an agenda item that's later on, I will ask you to stop and bring your comments back for that item.
Read the statement?
Would you read the statement, ma'am?
Of course. "Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard."
All right. Just down to you, three minutes.
We all know each other, no need for formalities. Yesterday, I was on the phone with your board clerk over here, and I was preparing some documents, and I was eating lunch, and Chewie came to me, and I thought he wanted my lunch, but he actually wanted to talk to Stacy. Chewie's my beagle, and he's very friendly. He says hello. You know, I didn't bring those documents, but I didn't want to upset or shock you folks, but what was there, we're not going to talk about, what was in those documents and the photos. It has nothing to do with politics, anything else. The only reason I'm here today is I had a meeting with a staff member before they had to get out in the field, took care of that situation. Finding something to talk to you about, and I can talk to you about something really interesting. This shirt is from 1997. Most of my clothes, I bought quality clothes, and just, they last, what can I say? But also, that year, I met somebody, and his name was Rafael Gayón, and he was down in the Chiapas region in Mexico. He was fighting for the rights of indigenous people, the Mayan descendants, but he said something that always stuck with him. This was the beginning of the commercialized internet age, where it just entered our homes in the internet, online banking, to research you could do, government farms. And he said that we're going to see what happens when the real world collides with the virtual world. And I thought that was a very insightful comment, and we are seeing what happens right now. In Calaveras, you're seeing what happens, the virtual world collides with the real world, and how we're ignoring the poorest of them. We're not providing them with the services and things. So with that said, not much said. There we go.
Terry?
My favorite sign. Terry McBride, Calaveras County Committee Chair and Senator, New California State. We went back to Congress last week or so, and boy, do they like what we're saying. We're going back again, I'll be joining them this time. I am the Senate Pro-Town President of New California. So what I want to read to you, and what you need to take a look at first of is 1026. This is copy-pasted directly out of California legislative law a few years ago, a little harder to find. Talks about oath of office. Below that, I'm going to read, as long as I can, "The legislature of the State of California finds out," this is code 1027.5, "there exists a worldwide revolutionary movement to establish a totalitarian dictatorship based upon force, and violence rather, upon law, kind of relies on electronic voting. This worldwide revolutionary movement is..." voting. This worldwide revolutionary movement is predicted upon and is designed and intended to carry into execution the basic precepts of communism as expanded by Marx, Lenin, and Stalin." Are we seeing that now? I'd say so. "Pursuant to the objectives of the world communism movement, endemriss foreign countries illegally constituted governments have been overthrown," look what's happening, "and totalitarian dictatorships established therein against the will of the people. And the establishment of similar dictatorships in other countries is eminently threatening. The successful establishment of totalitarian dictatorships has consistently been aided, accompanied, or accomplished by repeated acts of treachery, deceit, teaching of false doctrines like boys or girls and girls or boys, teaching untruth, together with organized confusion and subordination and disloyalty fostered, directed, instigated, or employed by communist organizations and their members in such countries. Within the boundaries of the state of California, there are actively disciplined communist organizations presently functioning for the primary purpose of advancing the objective of the world communism movement, which organizations promulgate, advocate, and adhere to the precepts and the principles and doctrines of the world communism movement. These communist organizations are characterized by identification of their programs, policies, objectives with those of the world communism movement, and they regularly cooperate and endeavor to carry into execution programs, policies, and objectives substantially identical to programs, policies, and objectives of such world communication communism movements." I don't have enough time, but I would say, look at what we do within this county and look at the votes that you do and what you have and other Board of Supervisors in this state have allowed. So anyway, thank you. We have a board town hall on Thursday. You're very welcome to join us down in the Valley Springs Roundtable. Thank you.
Mr. Butler?
My name is Christopher Butler, publisher of Calaveras2024election.com. The following statements are evidence-backed facts. On October 19th, 2024, a public event is scheduled to be staged in Murphy's that has been branded the Murphy's Gathering. The spent is produced by the Calaveras Visitors Bureau and the Murphy's Business Association. My comments today are from Martin Hubbard, as a reminder of his past words and actions taken against me in his conflicted role as the Executive Director of the Calaveras Visitors Bureau remain current and have caused me direct quantifiable business harm. This Murphy's Gathering event has in its origins is an infringement of my federal California-protected trademarks for both my company and for my brand, Murphy's Witch Walk, of which I am the co-owner. I invested four years and tens of thousands of dollars entrepreneurially creating two businesses during the COVID lockdown. Murphy's Witch Walk proved so successful it injected over $1 million in tourism revenue per occurrence into the Murphy's and Calaveras economies over three iterations of the event from 2019 through 2022. On October 29th, 2021, Martin Hubbard, Executive Director of the C V B, indiscreetly placed a call to my business partner in my other fledgling tourism promotion venture. I allege that Martin exhorted my now former partner to sever ties with me, informing her that she'll never again be able to book any business with Calaveras Companies if she did not do so. Efforts to undermine my Murphy's Witch Walk began in June 2021. I allege that a libelous document was distributed by the Executive Director of the Calaveras Wine Grape Alliance, at that time Sandra Hess, now Sandra Beals, who verbally admitted to me on October 23rd, 2022, that she acted under pressure from the membership of the Calaveras Wine Grape Alliance, of which Martin Hubbard and Marita Callaway were both board members. I later found out through verbal admissions and the presence of witnesses and email communications between Hubbard, Callaway, and myself, they too were allegedly involved in the effort to undermine my Murphy's Witch Walk. This harassment campaign against my business ventures and personal and professional reputation were inclusive of intentional and concerted attacks of defamation of character, tortious interference, restraint of trade, trade libel, false light, and trademark violations, all backed by well-substantiated primary source evidence. Refer to Sheriff Harassment Report Number 2208007 I filed against Hubbard on January 4th, 2022. This statement will soon be a video clip published to murphyswitchwalk.com and calaveras2024election.com as well as murphysgathering.com and calaverasvisitorsbureau.com, as I own the latter two domain names because Hubbard failed to purchase them, so I did so.
Thank you. Board recognizes former supervisor Ponte?
Good morning. I love the Archives proclamation today. And as I look at that skeleton, that's kind of how I feel at times. So that was a very nice proclamation, and I can't say enough about archiving. I'm here today because I'm the president of the Angels Camp Museum Foundation, or a fundraising arm for the museum. And I am proud to say in the last year that we've been working on an exhibit that recognizes a company here in Calaveras County, specifically home base in Angels Camp. It's called the California Electric Steel. They've been in business for 170 years. They started October 18th, 1954, or 1854, excuse me. It's been owned, started with the Booster family as a foundry, turned, or locksmith shop turned into a foundry, and then went to the Damaris family, and then went to the Monteverti family, and then went to the Cresby Whittle family. And today, it's owned by, and the Stam family. And today, it's owned by Bruce and Karen Whittle and Bob and Gretchen Helvey. We received a $10,000 grant from the Calaveras Community Foundation to start this project, and we matched it with community donations of another 10. So for $20,000 hard cost in putting the exhibit together. But most importantly, this exhibit would not come together if we didn't have some key people working on it, specifically Martin Hubbard as a volunteer with the museum who put this together and worked with others such as Grant Armstrong, Staria Stein, Chuck Snyder, and Jim Miller. And it's with these folks, working with the current families, that we were able to put together the exhibit. I sent invitations to you. Hopefully, you received them. We are acknowledging this family at the Wild West Fest on Saturday, October 12th, this Saturday at noon. We have various signatories coming in. We have past and former employees coming and honoring the family and opening up this exhibit. So I'd like to share this with the board. As we invite you to join us, we are submitting requests for proclamations for this family. And I don't know if the Board of Supervisors of the county has that information, but we will be sending it. And I would ask that you consider perhaps honoring this family at a future board meeting with our proclamation and invite the various owners of the company and perhaps the employees to it. I think it would be well-deserving. I can't think of another business that's been in existence for 170 years in Calaveras County. They are the longest-running, continuous-running, family-owned foundry west of the Mississippi. And that has recently been acknowledged by Congress. So we hope to have Senator Congressman McClintock here, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Hello. My name is Robert Murray. I'm a resident in Mountain Ranch and a business owner in Mountain Ranch. Not sure of this first meeting I've ever been to. I just came to a wall where I don't know where else to go. There's a couple of issues that I have with my business. I'm battling with an illegal food vendor in my area that has been ripping my business down and tearing my community apart and dividing it. That's the one issue. The other issue is this promoting business, trying to get business up the hill to me. I put up signs. There's some sign ordinance that says you can't promote your business off-site. And basically, the illegal food vendor is the one that made the complaint. And it's a code that they only enforce if it's a complaint. And I just don't know which way to go. And I don't know, maybe after the meetings, if you two can direct me in the right direction. That's basically what I got. I mean, there's been, over a year, this food vendor has been operating illegally, and no one has enforced it. There's been no punishment against them. Now they're trying to go do it legally, but there's still damage that's been done. You know, I'm a struggling business. I have payment plans on taxes. I do everything legally. I struggle. This person pays nothing to no one. Now they're trying to say they're operating under a, what would you call it? They're trying to operate it under a nonprofit, which everyone knows that they're not a nonprofit. So they have no business license as of the county as of the other day. And I just don't understand how they're still able to operate every single day with.
Comments? Are there any? All right, we will move on. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Thank you. Are there any board members like to pull an item?
Mr. Toffenelli and I would like to pull item number 16, please.
You have items? Are there any items in the room that would like? Captains?
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Board. Anthony Ebert, Captain, Calaveras County Sheriff's Office. I need to remove item number 15. I plan to bring it back later date, November, early December. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
Other items from the room? All right.
No online requests.
All right. Is there a motion to approve? Move by supervisor Fandorf?
Second?
Second, Mr. Supervisor Toffenelli.
Everyone's got their line on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? carries five up. All right, we will move on to item 16.
Item 16, agreement Public Works authorized for Tare to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Calaveras County Water District for the county to provide reimbursement for a portion of paving on Hartfixon Road in the amount of $456,154.
Supervisor, stopper? You raise your hand first.
A few reasons. First of all, I'm glad this is before us just for the sake of, I've been asking for these type of agreements to be brought before the board since 2019. And it's great to have the cost sharing. It's beneficial to both sides moving forward. But I'll let Mr. Toffenelli bring up one end of it. I do want to bring up the point of, you know, in this scenario, this is offsetting a cost of $456,000 potentially on SB1 money that's going into Hartfixon Road, correct?
Correct.
So at that point in the future, I think that it would be good for the board to sit down and have a discussion. I've talked to you, Mr. Pedro, about this and do a study session. Because these SB1 funds, when they're located to certain areas or districts per se, it's about mileage of road, consistency used said roads. I mean, there's a lot of things that go into the location of which district gets how much money and how we move forward. We need to have the discussion on these offset dollars in the future because I think we have a concern. Vista del Lago was between Mr. Toffenelli's and my district. There's recently an offset from PG&E. I'd like to know where that money went and what it's being used for. So I, you know, and in the future, I think that guidance, as Mr. Pedro had brought up to me, would be a good thing from the board so that when offsets like this happen in specific districts, we need to give direction as a board on how we want to reuse that money and where. Personally, you probably get what my opinion is, but I'll leave that to the time of the study session. And Mr. Toffenelli has more to bring up, which I completely agree with also.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yeah, I have several concerns on this because it just, when I read it, it just wagon trail flashes in front of me because this is estimates. We're talking about estimating values here. And where it's going to be in 2026, I don't know. My opinion is that, and we were supposed to do it in 2021, but we held off. They haven't done anything. Apparently, they're not going to get done until 2026. So why are we paying them $456,000 as an offset to pave it? Why aren't we paving, going to do the paving in 2026? And whatever the overcost, because from '21 to '26, we don't know what the cost is going to be, the difference, why aren't we paving the road and then offsetting them offset whatever the difference of the cost from 2021 was to whenever we get it paved? So we're doing the work based on $456,000 or whatever the cost was in 2021. And they reimburse us what the difference is because we weren't able to pave it in 2021. If you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, Robert could speak to probably the history better, but I guess to say, it could have gone either way. The way this is written, though, it does put a $500,000 cap on the county's responsibility unless it comes back.
Okay. And that's where it gets the wagon trail with me. We had caps on change orders. But because it said estimate, and it says estimate, those caps didn't apply. So that's why I have a question about this. Again, it doesn't say solid. It says estimated cost and the cap of $500,000. But we have the same type of language in the wagon trail, change orders that didn't apply.
Yes, sir. Good morning. Right now, CCWD has a contract to perform quite a bit of work on those roads on Hartfixon. The intent is that that contractor working under CCWD is going to complete the paving of the road. And so then, there's not going to be a contractor under the contract with Public Works to do the work. We're using CCWD's contractor. And the amount that was calculated to be the amount that the county will participate in with CCWD is based on the impact that CCWD has on those roads. So that's been calculated. And I understand what you're saying, that there is a cap disagreement right now is intended to... We're trying to show with CCWD how much we're able to participate with so that CCWD could go forward with their work.
So it's kind of opposite of what I was thinking. So at this point, we're only obligated up to that amount. CCWD's doing the work. So if the costs go over later on, then CCWD's going to take on those costs, not us.
Well, if I may interject, because I did specifically draft some language into the proposed agreement that was provided by CCWD. And of course, you know, I'm certainly not going to sit here and say that unexpected changes don't take place. Change orders may not come forward. That is, there is an element of the unknown there. Absolutely. What we did write into this agreement, so first of all, these prices are based on, my understanding is CCWD did bid this. They have a contract. So these are not speculative numbers. They're the actual contract numbers. You're right that change orders could come forward. We wrote in that to the extent there are proposed change orders that work, and when I say the county's work, I mean the work that the county is responsible for reimbursing CCWD for. The county has to have an opportunity to review and approve those change orders. And there is a cap. And so I can't sit here and tell you that there are...
And the way I'm reading this right now, the 456, we've already said 500. It's already written there, 500. So 456 is, and we're saying it's a cap, but it's not going to be a cap. I just see this as two years too early. If they're going to do the work in 2026, which is what it says, we should be bringing this back to the board then. Because I'm saying we were going to do it in 2021. And the cost of asphalt and labor and everything else back in 2021 was here versus 2026 up here. And the cost of asphalt and labor and everything else back in twenty twenty-one was here versus twenty twenty-six up here. Or, or even twenty-four that you're saying the contract was. So, so we should be saying, okay, what the costs were in twenty twenty-one, that's what we'll agree to. Because that's when we were going to do it. But that's not what this says. And that's not what the cost associated with this. And it's already says in excess of five hundred thousand dollars. That's already an open door. I don't know why that's in there. If it's four fifty-six they agreed to, then it should say four fifty-six. And, and yes, it can come back to us, but it doesn't mean that it's going to finish the job. If we don't agree to the change orders, if it comes four hundred and twenty, then it's not going to finish the job. They'll just walk away because we didn't agree to the change order. It's, it's similar to, another thing's coming up here, the wagon trail. I can see it written into this regardless. I, I, I think it's two years too early. I think it's not based on the, what it should have been based on, on, on twenty twenty-one costs, when we were going to do the work. So I, I can't support it. I'll tell you just right now, I just can't support the way it is.
Supervisor Stopper, do you have anything you'd like to?
Yeah. The original location for SB one funds for, for Hartfixon in its entirety, what was the total? Can, can, can we get a number of what we were originally going to invest in Hartfixon for the SB one funds, Robert, for repaving?
Yes, I don't remember that number.
It was, it was, it was like over a million. I can't remember the exact number off the top of my head, but it's like one point some odd million dollars a location. So in this scenario, it's a bid by the contractor from CCWD is already in. So the, those numbers are locked without change orders, Mr. Toffenelli. And we all, and that's all part of the real world. But I foresee that this is the first step towards obligating our part, but obligating CCWD into finishing the work. And, and the potential savings overall is a risk that I'm willing to take and support, support this moving forward. I, I I completely hear what Mr. Toffenelli's concerns are. And for a majority of it, I agree a hundred percent. Because we live it every day with everything on cost, cost of living and everything moving forward in the future. And as we got to find ways, you know, where we can possibly lock down these contracts better. But you know, with the way things are and cha, you know, the real world and changes going forward, it's going to be hard, hard to find a, you know, way that's going to cover all the bases for Calaveras County. So that we don't get somebody, they just put it the way, sneaking up behind us, you know. And so I, I'm going to have to support this.
Every year or, every year or time that they put it off, the costs are going to rise. And that's where I'm at. I know we're committed here. But again, it, it says estimates. It has some of the verbiage in here that we've heard. And if there are change orders for whatever reasons, it's going to come back to us again. But it doesn't mean if we don't approve the change orders, much like this other project, that the project's going to get done.
Well, there is, there, I, I agree with you. We aren't carrying the note. It's like this other project for wagon trail, we, we took that from Caltrans.
I, I understand.
A long time ago before any of these people were on the board, while you're off the board, Mr. Toffenelli. And that's a huge responsibility that we'll have to look at in the future on making our decisions wisely. But in this scenario, they're taking on the responsibility. And yes, of course, they're going to try and come back and get some from us. But overall, the liability is, I felt less pressure of the liability than, than, than the other situation.
But. Some of the contractors.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
I'm not a lawyer. I wish I was. I shouldn't have went to school more.
I, I could go take the bar, but you know what? Sarah's not going to sponsor me in that, so.
Do you have other questions? I know Supervisor Albert, you have.
I just had a quick question. I mean, I know we have a little bit of time. Is it possible that we could have it rewritten to accommodate Supervisor Toffenelli?
It's an agreement that we already potentially struck with CCWD, although it's not approved by, is it approved by their board yet?
I don't know the answer to that question. They, their general manager did sign it. My presumption is that he obtained the appropriate authority to do so. But that's obviously not this, before this board. I am unaware of any reason why we couldn't propose changes.
We have to be specific about what we want.
I, 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 I would, I would be in favor of it if we could rewrite it to where it, it, it's a four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar cap. That's it. Four hundred and fifty-six thousand, our portion of it, if something's happened, they're, they're on the hook for it. Because it was supposed to be done in twenty twenty-one and they've carried it on. They're not going to be done until twenty twenty-six. So I would be in agreement because the way this is written, there's open, like you said, for a lot of different things. And I'm just learning from what we've gone through over the last two years. Trying to get things that are, that, this is it. If we're two years away from it, is it possible that we could save four hundred and fifty-six or even save the five hundred thousand dollars and, and that's it? We're, we're done. That's unfortunate.
I'd be, I'd be open to more discussion as long as that doesn't, as long as that doesn't bring any bridges moving forward. Also, I'd like to bring up, you know, we're supposed to, you brought up that we're supposed to pave it in twenty twenty-one. We had already put it off for two years prior to that because this potential object. So the ongoing cost has gone up exponentially, as Mr. Toffenelli said, and it's continuing to go up. This project is supposed to be done near, near the beginning of this next year. And now it's already being pushed back to twenty twenty-six. I mean, the, the goalposts keep moving on this situation. So I think, you know, possibly even more so in the project with a fixing. It's like if the goalpost posts keep moving and there's more things that come up, then we're going to have to sit down and renegotiate the MOU based on the real world and the facts that have moved forward.
And if you've driven on Hartfixon, just, it, it needs paved.
It was, it needed paved a long time before the original two thousand and twenty. Time, so.
Okay, Craig, you have a rebuttal?
No, just, just a, just a comment. It's pure policy decision, you know, here. But I, I wanted to remind the board, we, you know, we, we have, I think these are wonderful agreements. Where we cover this superior for the public in every which way. But also remind that the door swings both ways. And you just approved not long ago, a contract related to, I think it was Nardle Road system. It took a long time to get it done and PG&E paid more. And so, you know, we got to be careful because if we, you know, an ironclad limit on, you know, when it's reversed in this, in this case, if we, you know, might be asked the same way, PG&E may not have paid as much for the roads that we just, we just did that a month or so ago with the sport.
Yeah, but they didn't pay a lot for Vista del Lago. They didn't even grind it smooth before they micro checked it.
Well, it's, it's policy. I just wanted to inject that.
Maybe up where you're talking about Murphy's is separate, but Vista del Lago, they didn't.
Perfect. After the line they put in Hartfix, it's going to need to get you done. I'm, you know, I'm thoroughly in support of the idea and us getting the funds back. So I'm personally wanting to move forward with this at this time. Is, you know, we've, Jack, it looks like you want to move on.
Let's do some public comment and then if you want to make a motion.
If, if the board, yeah.
Public comment on this item? You have three minutes.
That's fifteen minutes of my time that someone's never going to get back. Thank God. I agree with both of you. Because I didn't listen to it after a certain point and I just wanted to hear it get over with. But let me, let me tell you what I am pleased with. What I am pleased with here is that you're taking the, the time to look at, to take into the, the account the fine details when it comes to roads and bridges in this county. Back in March eighteenth, nineteen fifty-five, a US senator who ran to the floor wanted to read in a letter that he received from a county supervisor. County supervisor in Jackson, Missouri. That county supervisor, he didn't, didn't state what his accomplishments were after. They had a county supervisor. He just stated that they had some of the best roads in the country. And that it started with this county supervisor. Roads and bridges, public safety, that's what people care about. That, that county supervisor was Harry Truman. After leaving office, he wrote that letter. And I won't go into the details of that letter. But, but it just goes to show that you'll be remembered for long after. You may have accomplished other things, that you'll be remembered for roads and bridges and, and the safety that you provide. So there we go. Thank you. I still have a minute and twenty-three seconds. Seeing as you took fifteen minutes of my time, I should use that, but I won't.
Is there other public comment in the room? Is public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
All right, I'll bring this back to the board for action. Is there a motion?
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Supervisor Stopper. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll tell you what. I'll, I'll go against what I said I wasn't going to support it. I'll, I'll go, I don't feel good about it because, but Craig thinks this is a good contract. He stands behind it. And he'll probably be gone in another month. I, I just have some feelings about it, just based on certain things. But I, I, I will run up to District One, so I will second it.
We have a motion by Supervisor Stopper, a second by Supervisor Toffenelli. Is there online comment?
There is no online comment. Your line.
My apologies.
No online public comment.
All right, got to get on today, guys. Very well, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. Thank you. We'll move on now to the regular agenda. Item seventeen.
Item seventeen, Public Works authorized the interim director of Public Works to execute contract change order six zero zero two to contract one two zero zero two one zero three with Suket Construction LLC in the amount of one million, two hundred, forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars.
Mr. Pedro.
Mr. Chair, just to note, Howard Zabel's on, online as well to participate as needed on this item. I thought it'd be good to preface, you know, preface the comments on this item, just as a reminder of the big picture of what's happened here. You know, with the, the whole wagon trail project, you know, your board totally supported, as did the COG, as did the City of Angels, the need for this project. And, and that's been commented on by everyone. But just to say it was, it's needed for, to improve the safety in the area. We know what's happened in some communities that don't have that. And also for the reason of economic development, it's, it's a good access to the heart of, of the county. It's been important enough that your board entertained the notion of taking the lead on this. And that's, you know, something definitely could be rethought and all that. But it just showed how important this project was to you and your constituents. But also the, and I can come in at this, at this stage of the game and just provide the, you know, perspective. I know many understand this, others don't. That this is a, has turned out to be a very culturally rich, you know, area that some have dubbed as perhaps one of the oldest archaeological sites, you know, in California. But what is that, you know, what is that worth? It definitely gave a rare glimpse into the rich history of the Calaveras band of Miwok Indians. But what did it cost? It cost a two-year extension, the time to build this. And also taking the project from, you know, twenty-seven million to right now, we're at fifty, fifty-three million. What was the driver behind that? We found, we have found seventeen different cultural sites along, along this project. And with each one, there's been, it's, it's caused a breakup of the planned delivery of, of this highway. For each of the, you know, the sites, not each individual site, but in many instances, instead of having a bid, because at one point this was a bid fixed rate job. But because of all these different sites, much of the dirt work, almost all of it, has had to be done by these time and material type of contracts, change orders. This one happens to be extraordinary, but the day of fixed price on this, that kind of got blown, you know, blown up with discovery of all these different, all these different archaeological sites. And that's made it difficult because we're no longer in the area of a fixed project. We're now doing some open field running when it comes to the dirt work. That's the bad news. The good news is that we're getting close to the end, you know, of it as well. So with that, just for perspective, you know, I'm here today asking you once again to approve this contract change order, supplement number two to your contract change order number sixty. That was approved by your board back in March of this year. As is chronicled in the original report that I, I came to you with in August. We found that the original amount that was put into the, into the original change order, number sixty, was woefully underfunded. And we did find that out late. We had a contractor not billing and we had not been keeping our developing cost estimates along the way. That is changed. And now we have a better bead on what this is going to take by way of the dirt that needs to be moved and the cost to, to move it. Your board did approve a supplement number one back in, ultimately it was September tenth. I was asking at that point that I could come back for the last meeting, September twenty-fourth, seeking, seeking a supplement number two. A couple of things, I'm just, again, just by perspective. You know, we felt it was important to change the basis upon which we projected our future roadway excavation. And that was using, tying into a flyover topo provided by Suket Construction. We see no advantage to them. It'd be, you know, we should be concerned about that, you know, that number. It'll ultimately be proofed out with our own independent flyover at the end of the, end of the project. What that showed is we still had eighty-four thousand cubic yards of material to, to be moved. You know, staff provided breakdown of what we thought that would cost to finish, finish that dirt work. That supplement, supplement number two is envisioned to, it was envisioned to cover about fifty, fifty-one thousand cubic yards of material at a cost of, gross cost of one million, two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars rounding. It was predicated upon an estimate of twenty-four dollars and fifty cents per cubic yard. And this is the better part of the presentation. I'm pleased to report to the board that what's happened since I was last before you is the cost per cubic yard that we've been experiencing is now down to about seventeen dollars per cu, you know, cubic yards. If you play that out over what we already paid, what has to be done, you know, up to that fifty-one thousand dollars of cubic yards of material, we will save roughly, we're on track to save roughly three hundred thousand dollars compared to what we were discussing when I was last here before you. That's really, that's really good news. It needs to be borne out in the field. But I see no reason to think that we're not going to continue to experience that lower cost. Actually, in, in the last, say, week or so, they've gotten so efficient, the way that we're able to approach the work now. Because there's a lot more given out in the field. There's not a lot more dirt to move. A lot of the roadway has been built. We're fairly confident that, that we can keep those numbers down. And I've observed and heard how the contractors approaching it. And I'm confident that, you know, we will continue to see these much lesser cost per cubic yards values that we've seen. So, so potential three hundred thousand dollar savings on this, potential on, on this supplement number two that I'm presenting to you. Also in the staff report on the top of page three, there's a breakdown that gives you the whole history of these change orders. We were contemplating, still have it just disclosed, that there could be a supplement number three. But if we continue to see these kinds of savings in cubic yards costs to move dirt, we may not need a change order, change order number three. We won't know that until we get into next, next year and see what the work actually is for us. At least at this point, it looks like we have, as good of information as can possibly be presented to you at, at this point. I'm pleased to, you know, be able to report what I've just shared. And again, just recommend today that you go ahead and please pass this so that we can get that change order, that supplement approved, we can pay our, our contractor. And, and again, have. again, have authorized legal authority to have this work being done. So with that, I'll stop, see if there's any questions.
Questions from the board, Supervisor Stoppa?
I just want to thank you, Craig, bringing, having you be willing to come here and help us out throughout this has really brought a team together over here and started to get a better grip on things, how things are going, especially with all the cultural issues. I wouldn't say issues, because it's a reality, but the cultural things that come up do. I wouldn't say savings, I would say thank you for the reduction of the overrun, because I don't see it as savings, but you know what, that's $300,000 less that we're over now. So, it's been good work that you've done, bringing the team together, getting a grip on this, streamlining, expediting, bringing it so that the cost of tonnage has come down how it has, and I think that's a tribute to you, even though my hardship with this moving forward, I brought it up since, I don't know, it's been for a few years now that I've not really liked this project, but hey, you know, maybe it's because on the other side of county, or I thought it was a good filter so that the people that didn't belong up here didn't get up here, or vice versa, but I do understand the safety reasons and the needs. But I still have a hard time supporting anything on overrun on costs with this, to keep in mind as we move forward, is I, I just, I have a hard time with this project from the beginning, and it's only been harder on me as we move forward. So.
Thank you. Other comments? Supervisor Toffenelli?
I echo him, and thank you, Craig, for coming here and helping us and getting the handle on this thing, and you've really done a great job in bringing this forward, and I truly appreciate that. But I do have a couple of questions, and you may have touched on it when you were speaking. When, this is the same thing that was brought to us two weeks ago, so the verbiage is pretty, at that time, you had 84,000 cubic yards still needed to be removed, and I kept, I said it kept rising, but do you know of that 84, what we have to move?
Left today, well, let me, yeah, I didn't get into the cubic yards total, but we're just under 30,000 cubic yards moved since our last meeting.
So for the last two weeks, 30,000?
Has been moved, so just rough mass, we were starting at about 51,000 left. That was anticipated in this change order. Take 30,000 away, you still have around 21,000 cubic yards anticipated to be done under this, under this change order. So, cost born to date is right around 580,000, and we're anticipating about another 370,000 for this is over. Gross cost of 950, we get a credit as part of this, how all this works, so we'd be coming in around 695,000 would be the totals net for this change order.
For this change order, but this change order states it is for the remainder of the job?
No, no, this goes on, as I mentioned, the supplement number three, there could be a supplement number three.
Okay.
If savings hold true or improve, we may not need a supplement number three. But I put in the projection on page three, we might need supplement number three. That would be for about 25,000 cubic yards.
That's be for how much?
25,000 cubic yards.
That's not what I'm reading in this, so.
That'll be a little from pool space.
Talking about supplement.
No, I understand that, but that's, okay, thank you. It's not what's.
There are other questions from the board before I take a public comment? Supervisor Hubbard?
I just wanted to say thank you, Craig. This is a hugely important project, and I really appreciate the work that you've done to get us here, and let's push forward, we've got some time now to get as much done before the season changes. Thank you.
All right, public comment? Is there any public comment on this item?
First off, there's no need to be nice to him, he's going to be here for another four months or so, so at that time, at that time, they should be nice to you. In the meantime, you know, let's work him off. Realize, Mr. Guaramendi, your vote doesn't count, hasn't counted for months now. The last time that we could have stopped this project was back when you voted on the wall, the EMA, or SME, or whatever it is, wall. And at that time, you could have made the decision to turn it over to the state of California, ask them politely, beg them to take the profligance to, okay, let me go back here and take a look at this again. You're pretty much stuck on this project, there's no backing out of it. The state of California will not take it over, perhaps phase two, perhaps you should look at phase two. I'm not saying whether this is a good or bad project, I think it was well-intentioned and back in 2002, it was identified, 2012, the county started working on it, and I believe it was 2019 before it was initiated. In that, in that time, you were collecting room fees for the project, saving money. I'll take that back, this is a worthwhile project. Anything that improves the public safety is good. I'm not sure, using it as a filter to keep people from down in the valley out, who can be predominantly, yeah, not good, but I forgive you for your statement. We have to be sensitive to all. And with 50 seconds remaining, I want to, actually, I can be nice to Craig Pedro, he's a wealth of information, the state of California's been a wealth of information, and Robert Pattinger, he did what he could do up to that point. Things were different, things were different. Since Mr. Pedro's come along, yes, things, but that's just the nature of construction. That's just the nature of construction. So, good words to Mr. Pattinger on this one as well. Thank you very much, and thank you, Craig. I like this guy, he's audible, nice, and very, very well informed, very knowledgeable. So, with that, I'm not going to be here for this next item, it's culturally sensitive to me. Take care.
My name's Christopher Budner, publisher of calaveras2024election.com. I come before you today to reiterate my points addressed two weeks ago on September 24th, 2024, concerning the fiscal and construction supervision mismanagement of the wagon trail realignment project. As a concerned citizen echoing Supervisor Guaramendi's stated worry that the project could bankrupt the county, I contacted Caltrans, urging the agency to be present here today and to take the project over from Calaveras due to the county's inexcusable mismanagement with the wagon trail realignment project now approaching $29 million over budget for what was to be a $24 million first phase of the project. Also inexcusable is the failure to have initially and subsequently employed drone-based ground-penetrating radar at the construction site to effectively map subsurface features such as rocks, boulders, and potential concentrations of cultural artifacts. Any entry-level drone with highly sensitive ground-penetrating radar may be purchased for $4,000. Also inexcusable is the failure to have initially and subsequently employed drone-based surface contour mapping at the construction site to effectively map surface features and distortions indicating potential concentration of cultural artifacts. A drone for this flyover topography can map 400 to 500 acres per day and should have been repeatedly utilized. It's incomprehensible that this county and its Public Works Department has been penny-wise and millions of dollars foolish to not have insisted upon this relatively low-cost aerial surveys to avoid the preventable fiasco of the wagon trail realignment project cost overrun. As I stated two weeks ago, it appears that this board was operating under the reasonable expectation, but a fall city, that there were competent, proactive, fiscally responsible people in place, people out there on foot, watching, Gary, to serve as good stewards for the people's trust with their tax dollars. Well, that happens to be me, Christopher Budner, calaveras2024election.com, and I'm back today. I reiterate, it's time for the county to admit defeat and immediately turn this mismanaged project over to Caltrans for completion. Calaveras County does not have the bandwidth, personnel, wherewithal, the money, and as can be clearly seen by our elected officials and appointed staff, interim and other, the talent pool to manage such a substantial earth-moving and road-building undertaking. The wagon trail realignment project is beyond the grasp of this rural government. My name's Christopher Budner, publisher of calaveras2024election.com.
Is there other public comment on this item? Public comment online?
Mr. Zabel does have his hand raised online?
Mr. Zabel, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just, I wanted to kind of reiterate what Craig had said, and just to provide a little bit of clarification on Supervisor Toffenelli's question as to the quantity remaining, you know, there were a few quantities that were mentioned that Mr. Pedro mentioned, but just to kind of summarize, so as of August 26th, there were 84,000 cubic yards remaining. Since that time, you heard, you know, there were about 30,000 yards moved in 13, the 13 days between September 18th and October 3rd, so just last Thursday, the period between, going back one period between August 27th and September 17th, 8, 8,300 yards moved. So the net, the net estimated cubic yards remaining for the entire job, not just for this change order, not just for the season, is 46,420. Again, it's an estimate based on, you know, based on the topo from August 26th, and the estimated load counts, again, there'll be a reconciliation at the end of the job, a topo reconciliation for the actual quantity. And we have seen the production greatly increase, the hardest, the hardest dirt work is in the rearview mirror at this point, and, you know, things are, things are looking good to, you know, to keep proceeding with dirt work. So that's, that is what we are hoping, hoping to do here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there the public comment online?
There is no further public comment.
Very well, I'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Hubbard, second by Supervisor Follendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have an aye from Supervisor Hubbard, Supervisor Follendorf, Supervisor Toffenelli. Opposed?
No.
Nay. No, Guaramendi, stopper. Pass is three, two. Move on to item 18.
Item 18, agreement, Public Works authorized the board chair to execute amendment 14 to agreement 12001806, with Dewberry Engineers, Inc., increasing the amount, maximum amount payable by $578,262.81 for a total amount not to exceed $3,379,288, and extending the term through June.
Tribal monitoring aspect. By far, the tribal monitoring is the biggest part of this agreement. You'll notice on page two, there's a number of prior amendments that have been approved over time, those have been primarily due to tribal monitoring activities. And this request is really no different. It does extend our ability to have Howard Services, our project manager, through the end of this project, now, I get to December of '25. It also, so that's about $180,000 for that. It also includes about $70,000 total for appraisals and the right-of-way attorney, those costs, and then the big number is 325,000 more for tribal monitoring. So that's the components of the request, and I wholeheartedly recommend that you approve that.
Questions from the board? Supervisor Follendorf? Other questions? All right, we'll go to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any online?
We have no online public comment.
Very well, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion. Is there a motion?
Move.
Moved by Supervisor Follendorf, is her second?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Hubbard. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we've got a aye from Supervisor Hubbard, Supervisor Follendorf. Opposed?
No.
No. We have a no from Supervisor Stoppa, Supervisor Guaramendi, Supervisor Toffenelli. Would you like to vote?
So what happens if we vote no here?
Well, tribal monitoring will stop, any support for right-of-way services will stop, and I probably lose my project manager and his support, and I can't, I can't foresee doing without any one of those.
So, so then the estimated cost would be more than the 578,000, so we're stuck in this situation. I'm put in a position where I'm... The cost would be enormously more than this, so I don't see why everybody can't vote yes, because it costs more. I don't know what, so yes.
Very well, passes. Are you, for a stop now? Okay, apologize for cutting you off. Very well, passes three, two.
Thank you.
Move on to item 19.
Item 19, agreement OES, one, make a public benefit binding, two, authorize the board chair to execute agreement 04702405, with Nate's Tree Service for Cosgrove Creek Vegetative Management in amounts not to exceed $105,000 with a term from October 8, 2024 through December 31, 2024, and three, approve budget transfer to the, for the increase in expenditures in the OES budget by $105,000 and reducing general fund contingencies by the same amount. Requires a four-fifth vote of the board.
Eric?
Morning, Ward, how are you guys? I come to you today and asking for $105,000 to do some vegetation management within Cosgrove Creek. That'll go from basically the confluence at Silver Rapids with Calaveras River, which that corn lot is owned by CCWD, all the way up through Gold Creek, where the extensive flooding has occurred for the homes. I did get to go out. Any questions?
Questions from the board, Supervisor Stoppa?
We've been over this a few times in the past. It's October. We only get one month a year for the permit for going through, going through there. There is opportunity for extension, the extension's been hard to get in the past. We get put in a spot, there's been times when we started this, certain sections have gotten done. More often than not, they start at the top, work their way down, and District Five portion of Cosgrove Creek, because it's not just through Gold Creek, it always goes down pat pretty much almost all the way to Silver Rapids that we need to clear, almost. And we're left with vegetation areas in the past during flood years in my district, and partially some, in some instances, also in District One. Not that matters which district, it should all be done within the month of time. We brought this up in the past, I've said specifically myself, we need to be proactive. October is fire season. It's one of the heaviest fire parts of the fire season of the year. So, the chances of the Cal Fire Crew being taken off for a fire, I would say 90% plus, and that's a loss. I asked to have this, and I'm not pointing at OES, I mean, this is conglomeration of Public Works working through and with OES to get this done. The, these contracts wasn't ready. All of a sudden, we lose the crew? How far are we into October in the permit already? And we don't have anybody out there working. We'll have to ask for extension, maybe it's easier to get now. I know... I know from my experience working with Fish and Wildlife, I've got a great relationship with them on my other job. I mean, we pulled the trigger on a permit last week that we're going to be doing the work on the sixteenth, and because we already got it, it's basically, you know, the template down, we just changed the year and the date that we're going to do it, and we always do what they ask. It's not a problem, it's a yes, so it's not hard to do. We've had problems in the past. I think it's probably gotten a little more streamlined here. But the problem, my point being is, next year, before October, we have this contract before us in case Cal Fire falls off. And I know Mr. Toffinelli's asked for it for years also, and we keep going through, it's like Groundhog Day. We're going through the same thing again.
So are you talking about the sixteen-two permit, the alteration?
Well, it doesn't even matter about the permit. Permit, we have to get to do the work. It's the fact that Cal Fire's not there, and we're the seventh day of October, we have three weeks to get this done. These guys cost a hundred and five thousand dollars because they don't work as hard as the prisoners do, and getting it done quickly, it costs far more and take way more time. Honestly, and then, and then, so the point is, we have to have this contract already on the books and ready to pull the trigger, like, we should have already approved it in case Cal Fire doesn't show up.
I could bring this earlier next year.
That's gotta be a thing.
Keep in mind, you know, this is just going to reduce the risk, as any waterway, we call them strainers, but any vegetation that piles up just raises the elevation because it can't go through the system. So I have dedicated a lot of time, and will continue to dedicate a lot of time to find a permanent solution, but we do have to do something to reduce the risk this year.
Absolutely, and I'm completely in favor of this. This is something we've been doing for quite some time before I was here, so. I just, the contract's got to be ready earlier.
Supervisor Follendorf?
I know this kind of got dumped on your lap, based off of what both of these contracts and going after a multi-year RFP or public funding benefit to combat, I think, all of our concerns. You know, we're going into another winter season, again, for at least as long as I've been on this board, we're constantly behind the eight ball, so why don't we re-look at these contracts and bring it to the board for multi-year, as needed, or on-call, rather than just doing these one-time deals, because we know that there needs to be a need, and if it's not done before May, good luck.
Or the guts, yeah.
We're gonna have to go to one of these contracts, whatever that contract looked like. So why don't, if we're gonna continue to be behind the baseball, and this is gonna be the revolving door, why aren't we just doing a multi-year contract and then go from there, and then maybe solve some of this health burn, where we're not rushing when the permit expires at the end of this month?
I think it boils down to trying to find a permanent solution. Honestly, I think, in everything that I've read, there's been studies, there's been plans drafted. Back in '05, there's two options that were five, six million dollar projects to make a permanent solution that haven't gotten off the ground. And so I think that is the nature of why this has come to an end.
Eric, could I make a comment? Supervisor Follendorf, as Supervisor Stopper mentioned Cal Fire, I think in the past, Public Works has looked at ways to reduce the cost of this clearing project, and so they've looked to Cal Fire to do the clearing for the county because it is much more cost-effective, as Supervisor Stopper mentioned. However, as Supervisor Stopper also mentioned, we have increasingly had larger and more fires in the foothills that have pulled those crews off, so they're not as readily available as potentially they have been in the past. So looking at doing a contract for a multi-year may be something that we should consider at this point because we know that Cal Fire is not as available as they have been in the past. As Eric mentioned, we've spent some staff resources looking for permanent solutions over the last couple of months as well. OES will be applying for a grant potentially to help offset this issue. We are looking to partner with some different agencies as well because we don't believe that this is simply a county solution. We do think that there are some partnering agencies out there that may be interested in coming up with a permanent solution for this area.
And I understand all that. It just, we consistently have the same conversation, year after year after year. We knew when the state of California started closing the camps, there was going to be a reduction of even fire crews even then, when we were talking about the size of the road. So this should be no surprise that Cal Fire was not available three years ago. I mean, this has been, this has been an ongoing conversation. I mean, you've got CCC crews out there that we can get out of Stockton. I mean, there are numerous, and I just don't understand why, yes, I appreciate trying to keep the cost down, but that cost is, doesn't matter when you look at how many homes are going to get flooded, and that cost is going to be astronomical to our community. So I don't care, you know, trying to delay it to save five thousand dollars when you're going to have damages well over into millions potentially. I mean, I just don't understand why not being more proactive to come here and be like, okay, here you do often. I just, I'm just kind of sick of seeing it like Ben, over and over again, every October, we're now in crisis mode. It needs to stop.
So I would pledge to the board, this will hopefully be the last time.
Yeah.
We've come this way, weren't we?
I think we...
My pledge is that we will have an option.
Thank you, Mary.
We're looking...
Are there other comments from the board, Supervisor Toffinelli?
Oh, thank you, Supervisor Follendorf and Supervisor Stopper. I've been sitting here for years, saying basically the same thing. And Eric, I know you're new here, but I've been advocating for a permanent solution since 2009, and we've came up with different solutions and different things, and none of them have come through. We even have estimates for cost, and then some experts saying, well, yeah, you can do that, but it's not going to last, whether you trench it out or whatever. Eventually, in the three or five years, it's going to fill back in. So a permanent solution, whether you dredge it out or not, is not actually a permanent solution because you're going to be spending millions more three to five, six years down because the sediment flowing down will do what's happened now. Those are some experts talking about it. We did have estimates at least to get a plan together to submit to Corps of Engineers, and those estimates were over five hundred thousand dollars. The money, you know, I will say this, I've been an advocate for Cosgrove Creek for many years, I still am. I think it's correct in stating that if, you know, we don't clear this out and spend the money, that it's not only going to cost those people the flooding and everything else, millions of dollars total, but it costs the county. When it flooded in January of 2023, our costs were more than what this is. We had a lot of costs that I think we're still waiting for FEMA to reimburse us on. So I appreciate everybody what they're saying, and I don't disagree. I'm in favor of doing this simply because of that. But a permanent solution, and one that we had spoke about earlier, has been, there's been so many things talked about on this, so many different eyes on it, there's so many different things. But the bottom line is, we have to deal, now, this is Fish and Wildlife, but we do anything permanently to that creek is Corps of Engineers, and right now, they're doing a water management study, and that's not going to be completed until 2026. And I don't think we're going to be able to move forward on any permanent project that has to do with this creek until they finish that water management study, and not only for the lake, but for the flow of the creek during peak and low seasons. So I think, I agree with Supervisor Follendorf that maybe we could look at a multiple year until we can come up with a permanent solution that is agreeable with the Corps and Fish and Wildlife, but you've got to remember, what we're dealing with is, that's habitat all the way from Highway 26 going all the way to those property lines, not just where the creek flows. All of that is habitat for all of the little bugs and frogs and salamanders. So you can't disturb that. I mean, we're allowed to go in there now because it's dry season and clear it out, but we're not digging ground up or disturbing ground. And so that's all part of this permanent solution has to take in that. But I'm in agreement that it will cost more than what we're asking for here, and I'm in agreement that we need to do this. I've been asking since August. We need to get something done. We need to get something done. We need to get going on it. We need, and here it is, we have three weeks left unless they give us an extension, and that's going to depend on the weather, whether we have any rain between now and when we actually get it done. Hopefully, they can get it done in three weeks, and we don't need to ask for an extension, but the possibility exists that we could be into November, and if it rains, then they're not going to give us that extension because that brings that habitat into play. So I would like to see this come to us again in May. I'm in agreement on the fire situations. We can't depend on them. They went in there when they had a chance, and they just cleared a little bit of land. They didn't get done much, and it's been sitting since. But I do have another question. We're asking for a hundred and five thousand dollars here, and it's coming out of our contingencies. There's money in the budget in Public Works, but I think there's still twenty thousand dollars earmarked for Cosgrove Creek. So why are we pulling all hundred and five thousand out of contingencies instead of eighty-five thousand and put the twenty thousand, we already have earmarked for Cosgrove Creek from Public Works, to make up the difference?
Thank you.
I'd like to break the breakdown, but it's, much of that's cost already incurred, some of it from Cal Fire, some of it from permits, some of it in our own staff.
Okay. Can I? Can I? What did the staff do? Were they removing, let me just get to the point. Are you incurring costs for them removing what's being cut down?
Some of it was, yes.
They burned it all. What did they remove? Every year, they put fires there, piles there, and the fire crew comes in later, after the fire season's over, and they burn it all. What do they remove?
I'm sorry, I was just, remove it by way of burning, you're correct.
Our crews don't do that. The Cal Fire Crew does it. These contractors that move it pile it up, and they put a little charcoal in the center, and then Cal Fire comes through. What does Public Works do on removing that stuff? I want to know.
Right, our crews have to stay there with water trucks and so forth and watch anything that's burning, but there's also administrative costs trying to apply for the permits, sending the biologists out there every time that the work is occurring in the creek, we have to pay for that. So there's various costs in administering what's going on in Cosgrove Creek.
So those costs are going to be twenty thousand dollars?
No. No, it doesn't cost that much. I don't believe it.
Well, we provided the information to the CEO, and we'd be glad to generate what supports that.
That'd probably be a good idea.
And the only reason for that, this is, it's not a general fund department, you can't use road funds for non-road purposes, and that's the only reason that we even have to report.
We understand that, and there is a certain amount of cost to it, but I'll just drop it at that.
Supervisor Toffinelli, you have another comment? No. I've got a couple of questions, and one, and suggestions. My CEO, would you like to say something? I have a couple, I mean, I agree with all the supervisors here, that this has happened every year for the eight years that I've served on this board, and there's no doubt that Supervisor Toffinelli has worked tirelessly to try to solve this problem. I would suggest that maybe the board consider putting this as part of our strategic planning document as an issue for this county as a whole to work through. I think we're having good progress in working through some issues, and I would suggest that we add this to that because this is a problem that's existed, as Gary said, going back twenty, thirty years. Nobody there is surprised when their house gets flooded, but we need to come up with a solution that's going to last because if we just keep piecemealing a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year to clear this, it's not solving the problem. I would suggest that we put this on the strategic plan. I have a couple of suggestions, and I won't be here when this goes before the strategic plan, and of course, I can attend as a member of public, but I'll take my last one. I think we ought to really consider things like a regional park. As I've discussed that historically, we have a park program going on. Maybe these are things we could kick around. Maybe we could kick around, and I know Gary's done a lot of this research already, flood control measures upstream to help out the folks downstream. I think we also have to take into consideration that we're spending a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year on private property, where every year, we make a public benefit funding, and all the citizens of the Calaveras County get to contribute to these homes and their safety. And we have to consider things like a community service district, where people are responsible for their own land, or taking it over as a county and making it public land. We have to get creative and figure out how to solve this problem, or we're just going to keep paying. And if we paid over a hundred thousand dollars over ten years, that's a million dollars. That's a pretty good start to a project if we put it together, and there's a lot of vehicles. So I would like to ask this board if they'd be willing to consider putting this on the strategic planning documents for the next year, to really dig in deep and come up with some countywide solutions, so that Gary doesn't have to carry this whole thing on his shoulders every year.
Let me just say...
Please.
I don't disagree what you said, but it may affect those homeowners, but it affects the whole area because it floods the highway, and it floods Hogan Down Road, and it flooded Highway 12 last year or two, and it flooded the trailer parks going up. So there was no way for them to get around, to get up there, coming up here, they have to come up to work here, they have to do it. So it's not just those homeowners, then they may lose property, but it affects a whole lot of people and their ability to get where they need to get in order to get to their jobs and get their money. So it was a disaster last year, it really was. And then, again, the cost that we had to evacuate people in the county, and FEMA has yet to reimburse. So there's a lot more to it than just that, and, you know, with climate change going on, we have no control over it. You look at what happened on the East Coast with the hurricane there, and the amount of damage that had. We don't know what's going to go forward. We don't know this year during the rainy season what's going to happen. So I'm in agreement with you, putting on a strategic plan. There's been so many things about a park, we had some partnership that we were going to do and dig it out, and there's been so many things that have been talked about, but when it came down to a lot of it, it was the costs, the cost in the county. If you look at the former grand jury reports, there's very little, hardly anything on Cosgrove Creek, but year after year after year, it's the animal shelter, and then the DA's office has been on there, and we're struggling to have funds just to do those, let alone a big project with Cosgrove Creek. And I'm not against it, I agree with it. I think that a partnership, that we had somewhat of a partnership with CCWD on a piece of property they had there, that we could do something to relieve it, I'm all for that. If we can get some type of project together like that through the strategic planning, and then look at what available grants are available to go out and do that, I think that's a great possibility to do.
I agree. Supervisor, I'm sorry, Eric, Supervisor Stopper?
I can support it going on a strategic plan, and, you know, and with that will give us a chance to discuss it in its entirety because there's been a lot, as he said, and I have some history in it from the other side, and those partnerships in the past, and, you know, opinions on how things went, and, you know, the fingers can go a lot of different ways, but we're building new relationships now, thanks to our CEO and other people working with those other entities. And just one thing, you know, let's talk to the people up at the headwaters for Cosgrove Creek. Maybe we can do something up there, Mr. Garry Mindy.
Happy to help do an inspection on that creek, on the blackberries that the whole thing starts from, the blackberry bush that Cosgrove started. thing starts from, the blackberry bush that Cosgrove starts, which is, I can see from my window. Eric?
I just wanted to brighten your days with some good. October 15th is supposedly when the NOFO comes out, the Notice of Funding Opportunities for two separate grants, FMA, which is under FEMA, and Building Residences in Communities, which is called BRIC. Both have some scope that we could utilize in this. Both do allow multi-phase projects. So I am committed to looking at that and enclosing. We have submitted reimbursement or emergency protective efforts from DR 468. So hopefully, we'll be getting that version.
Thank you. Well, let's solve this, let's solve this problem once and for all.
I'd love to sit down with you, talk a little bit more about Army Corps. Maybe Gary wants to be there also, but yeah.
There's going to be some spots open. There's at least one spot open on the Strategic Planning Committee, so see how it goes.
Personally, I love that, so thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Is there any public comment online?
There is no online public comment.
Very well. Bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll move this item.
By Supervisor Toffinelli, second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five zero.
Thank you, boy.
Let's get through today and this season and let's figure out how to solve this problem.
It'll be here in May, talk about it again.
All right. Next, we have a presentation on item 20, but we're going to take a five-minute bio break and let Jesse get set up. So we'll be back here at 11:01.
War cart when you see when you come into the county and then she also pull a little frog down to the bottom of the tree. So, all right. So the, just the gross crop value was a little over $25 million in 2023, which was an increase of 18% over 2022. And just as a reminder, this value does not include cannabis numbers as this is ultimately a federally funded report and cannabis is not a legal commodity at the federal level. So starting with the top three commodities in order. Number one, not surprisingly, is cattle as it is for pretty much every year, last quarter of a century. Total value there was a little over $13 million. And the number of head was fairly flat between 2022 and 2023. Cattle's overall weight was down, prices were up, so that led to that little tiny 1% increase in value. Timber was the second, as you see, so a little over $3 million. Just a little bit of a comeback as far as the increase at almost 3,200%. So if there's forest fires, like we don't know anything about here in Calaveras, supply and demand, especially as there's more houses being built, increase in lumber and therefore you're going to see them out there harvesting more lumber. Other livestock. So this one was valued a little over 2.5 million, 21% decrease. So that decrease is mainly affiliated with fluctuating poultry prices in response to highly pathogenic avian influenza. 2022 was a very bad year for the avian influenza. So what happened was not only were they depopulating a lot of meat birds, but a lot of egg laying hens, that meant there wasn't as much to go on the shelves in the grocery stores, prices went up. So this number is actually a correction. This is a little bit more of a normalization of what we should see year to year when it comes to poultry. And remaining commodities. So field crops and grazing rangeland. Total acreage is similar between 2022, 2023. The decrease was in rental prices and that's what basically drove down the overall value. Then with pasture, it was pretty flat acreage wise, but the rental cost did go up, so therefore that 9% increase. And then hay, we had a very wet year, so that actually led to more tonnage produced and sold, therefore we saw this very large 324% increase in the overall commodity value. Livestock products. 2023 was actually the first year that the value of goats was higher than that of sheep. Although a lot of people are turning to goat herds to control brush and lower fire danger, we actually believe that this increase that we received was largely driven by better survey reporting responses from our goat producers. And the same can actually be said for the livestock products. So that increased over 500%. And we really believe that it's just, we have a better reflection of the agricultural sector in Calaveras when it comes to these other livestock products. As far as sheep, those, they also went up 40%. And that is actually thanks to a spike in production coupled with a fairly level market value. Next, we have fruit and nut crops. Total value for fruit and nut crops increased by 53% to reach $3.5 million. This increase was largely due to recovery from the hard freezes that we had in 2022. That led to a countywide disaster declaration when the freeze damaged emerging fruit and nut crop. It was actually kind of a one-two punch that year. So we were already in the middle of doing the disaster declaration when we had the first freeze in the middle of April, but there was a second one in the beginning of May. So those who thought that they dodged a bullet and that their vines hadn't pushed yet, a lot of them got hit by that second wave. So this is kind of, you're seeing the rebound here. You're seeing this increase of 121%. Production went up 86%. The quality was much better as well because you didn't have a lot of damaged fruit on the vine. And this kind of carried over into olives here as well. That meant that wine grapes were actually our fourth highest commodity for gross production value at $2.4 million. And as far as walnuts, so walnuts have been struggling to find a fair price in the markets for the last few years. A lot of growers, because it's not really worth the money and inputs to harvest the walnuts, they've just been leaving them out on the trees. And unfortunately, I will say, I don't know if driving around the county, you guys have seen a lot of grapes still hanging out there. Wine grapes in 2024 have had a very bad year and I'm expecting that number to go way down. There is a glut on the market and there's also less demand at a consumer level for wine products. So unfortunately, a lot of growers haven't been able to get contracts for their fruit and that's why you're still seeing it hanging out there. And I think we're going to definitely see that reflected next year. Miscellaneous, so eight berry honey, that one prices decreased, but that was a statewide trend, so nothing unusual in Calaveras. And the nursery, pretty stable between 22, 23, 23, 10% change, not really a big change. All right. Cannabis, so cannabis, the total value for 2023 was $29.9 million. This represents a 46% increase over 2022. So why? There were more active licenses grows in 2023 at 131 as opposed to only 100 active licenses used in 2022. This isn't indicative of more people growing. This is actually just a lot of the same growers using multiple licenses to expand their actual production areas. Production was up, but some of the prices were way down. As you can see on here, trim was down 65%. And again, there was some market saturation. As you can see, increased yields of over 300%. Beyond this, cannabis production varies widely from year to year. There's a lot of different inputs that can change from year to year. So how many are doing outdoor grow versus an indoor grow, number of harvest per year, the market saturation, the demand, even the strain, if they're growing indica versus septiva. And then the other things too is this is a fairly new industry and has changing regulatory requirements, large overhead costs. And then there's also a large fluctuating employee pool. That also coupled with that there is a lot more inputs than a conventional crop, including there are vastly reduced pesticides that are approved for use on cannabis. And there is the, a lot more manual labor going into the actual plants themselves. Plus, there's also needed security clearance for those employees for, you're going to see a lot of variation year to year for cannabis. All right. Department summary is just kind of some of our little widgets as far as what we're doing activity wise within our departments. We have 13 different mandated programs within, within our department and two non-mandated. So these are some of the larger ones. So pest exclusion, these are activities to keep non-native invasive pests that are injures to agricultural landscape, meaning ornamentals, natural resources out of Calaveras County. We performed a total of 319 inspections in 2023. Pest detection, that's basically going to be like our bug trapping program. And that's where we practically place traps, keep key species of concern, for key species of concern to make sure that they don't become established in the county. We deployed 493 traps in Calaveras and checked them 2,150 times. And again, just as a little bit of a snapshot as far as why pest detection is important, last year there was a massive amount of especially oriental fruit flies, but exotic fruit flies found in California. I don't even know what the cost is, but I'm sure it, it must be vast if they pulled over in, in Southern California where they actually had to pull fruit off the trees because they kept finding, so clearly they were reproducing in, in the natural environment there. They pulled over a million pounds of fruit from residential neighborhoods and they had to bring in scores of people from like state, county, I mean CCC, I mean, it was crazy the amount of input just to try to get this pest out before it became established. All right. Direct marketing. This includes farmers markets and the certified producers who sell there. We conduct site visits to ensure that what is being sold is actually produced locally. Weights and measures, this is besides pesticides, one of our largest programs. This is a program where we annually test any commercial used weighing measuring or counting device. This ensures a fair and equitable marketplace for both the buyer and the seller. So last year, we tested 863 devices. All right. So before I take questions, I just wanted to take a moment to thank all of our local business owners, agricultural industry and other stakeholders, their county, state, federal partners, and of course my staff for all their contributions to make this crop report as well as our day to day operations possible. I honestly couldn't do it without my staff. So that being said, can I take any questions from you?
Questions from board. Supervisor Stopp.
Thank you for all the work you do. I, I see it down in my district this year, we had, let's see, locusts are grasshoppers, but grasshoppers aren't all necessarily locusts. So, so I learned a little bit, a little education also. Lisa, thank you for giving me all the information, but thank you for doing what you can, dealing with these types of pests and everything. It's crucial to the ag community throughout the county. And please keep our mosquito fish because I love them.
Of course.
Any questions from the board? Supervisor Hapley.
Yes, thank you. I always look forward to your presentations. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think Pauline knocked it out in park, saw the, the war cart, totally missed the frog. I think we're going to miss smoke tank this year, but I also wanted to bring that up because I know that there was an issue last year as far as prescribed burning, and that with Ray the other day and with the park. And it doesn't appear that the, the prescribed burns are going to happen. I think we'll get the grapes off the vine that are, that are coming off before the prescribed burns start, but I just wanted to bring that up again. I also want to say thank you because the products that we sell, the honey and olive oil just go off the shelves like crazy. So even they seem down here, we seem to see them fly off the shelves all the time. And I wanted to thank you also for your help with the farmers market and Angel's camp. That was awesome.
Absolutely. Again, I'm, we, we love being a resource for our community and otherwise, I, yes, so as far as smoke taint, I will say whatever's left on the vine is few and far between. So I think everything that is going to be harvested has been harvested this year.
I think California is 35% down in wine overall and it's, it's a huge concern.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, my, my husband's a winemaker, so I have a little insight on the trends, but yeah, he's just like pulling out his hair. Otherwise, I was going to say I'll see you guys in a month when I'm going to be here for my reappointment. So comments, good or bad, get them ready.
Very good. I have a quick question.
First, Ben's earlier point.
Will my trees come back that got stripped by those locusts slash grasshopper? I don't expect, we'll see whether they really did like my old trees a lot. But my question is, and we discussed this a little bit yesterday, and thank you very much for your time yesterday. The CDFA, I mean, we have to bifurcate this report.
Yes.
We have roughly 25 million in gross, we've got roughly 25, 29 million in gross estimated receipts for cannabis.
Correct.
So this, the report doesn't accurately reflect the total agricultural industry. I mean cannabis dwarfs every other commodity. The CDFA, I understand the money comes from federal government to CDFA and CDFA requires us to present this. The CDFA explicitly say do not include cannabis in our report?
There was an advisory from CDFA that specifically said to keep them separate, but because of your question, I did reach out to CDFA and I also reached out to my, the, the CACAS, so the State Commissioners Association. And this is something that we're going to look into a little bit more just because there are a lot of new commissioners that came on after all this came down. And so just we can get absolute clarification in case questions like this do come up.
I just wanted, I want you to be able to give us an, an accurate, big picture of all the ags going on and you're, have, you know, an arm and a leg tied behind you making that case. So I hope that CDFA will recognize that this is a legal product in the state of California and you're doing your job and you need to represent all ag in our reports. And this is kind of, it seems a little disingenuous for CDFA to say, do this with federal money, but have a tear out page in the back to submit. I'll leave that for the Secretary of Ag to debate with Secretary of Ag.
And like I said, I'll, I'll get what information I can, some clarification as far as, you know, where there is or is not wiggle room, and then I'll bring it back to the board and you guys can let me know what you would like me to do with cannabis or not.
We just want to, we just want to be able to support all the industries in this county.
Absolutely.
That component of the stuff.
I don't know about the we part. We, we, we have a cannabis department and, and that department is, oversees cannabis. So in my opinion, as long as we have that department, they should be the one giving us that information. Because we don't have a, a cattle department that gives us that. Yours is what's under it. Right now, we have under cannabis under a separate department. So that information, again, I think should be coming from them. They should be tracking that information and bringing that to the board.
I will modify my statement. I support all agriculture in this county. I won't speak further.
If I, if I may, I think they should equally be on there just because, you know, after people partake in the one, they're going to definitely want some cattle beef off of the, of the, so maybe some grapes.
Okay. Is there any public comment? This is informational item? Is there any public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
All right. Thank you very much, Jesse.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Jesse.
All right. Well, Jesse packs up, we'll move on to, oh, I guess we're going to trade out. Just take a second. Come on down, Madeline.
You were staying there. You're doing your own stuff.
Thank you, Jesse.
Hope you, you had, stay back there.
Full comment.
While she's getting that ready to go, I just wanted to say, I made an error when I was putting this into ICM2. I should have done the zoning amendment first. So if we could open with item 22, I'm going to present both the zoning amendment and the tentative parcel map together. They need to be processed concurrently, but technically the zoning amendment needs to be approved first in order for the map to be consistent.
That's fine. We will, we will change the order 21 to 20.
Thank you.
We'll change, we'll go 22 first, 21 second.
Thank you.
And therefore, I'm opening a public hearing.
Thank you very much. So Madeline Flandreau, this is project number 2022 dash 044, tentative parcel map and zoning amendment for Donald Holsworth. The applicant is requesting approval of a zoning amendment to amend the zoning of a 20 acre parcel from general agriculture, which is A1, to residential agriculture, which is RA, and a concurrent tentative parcel map to divide the parcel into two 10 acre parcels. So this is the subject parcel here in green. This is accessory parcel number 048-025-013, which is located at 5403 Pettinger Road in Berson. This is the aerial view from our county aerial image from 2022 of the subject parcel, which is developed with a primary single family residence down in the corner there. I don't know if you can see those blue dots, those are identifying the two residences. The lower one is the primary residence and the second one in the northwestern corner is the accessory dwelling. In addition, there are 12 accessory structures and several storage areas with approximately 170 vehicles and farm equipment, which are used by the landowner for their hobby. Can we zoom? I don't think I can zoom into this, I'm sorry. It's kind of hard to see, but at least you can kind of get a sense of the boundaries of the parcel and then the dashed line there where the split is proposed. Both parcels will use the existing driveways. The split will put the primary residence on proposed parcel one and the accessory dwelling on proposed parcel two. The applicants wish to do this because they are planning an addition of approximately 120 square feet onto the accessory dwelling. However, currently you can only have one primary residence and one ADU with a maximum square footage of 1,200 square feet. This addition would put it over the 1,200 square feet. So in this instance, splitting it up, putting each residence on each proposed parcel, they would be able to do the addition and they would be converting the current ADU into the primary residence, which would also allow them to construct an additional ADU on each legal parcel. There's no other further construction plans though at this time besides the small addition. The original application requested to amend the zoning to RR and to subdivide the parcel into four or five acre parcels. However, due to the presence of the California tiger salamander, which was found in the onsite pond during the biological assessment fieldwork, the applicant amended their map to just divide into two 10 acre parcels in order to remove the need for an access road. With this current proposal, they can just use the existing driveways with no additional The project site has a general plan land use designation of rural transition B, which is shown here in light blue. I don't know if you can see that little arrow that's pointing to the parcel. This designation is for existing rural neighborhoods. And the current zoning is A1, as I stated, which is shown here in bright green. The areas that are colored burnt yellow are RA. The amended request to rezon to RA is more consistent with the adjacent parcels. As you can see, there are no RR zone parcels in the immediate vicinity. And the RA zone also allows for more small scale agricultural uses of the parcel, proposed parcels, excuse me. This is the view of the current southernmost driveway that accesses the primary residence and the northernmost driveway that goes to the ADU, which you can see in the background. This shows there are several vehicles in storage and this is the onsite pond.
In storage.
In storage.
Being stored.
Being stored, yes. Thank you. And this is the onsite pond, which is in the northwestern corner, adjacent to the driveway that goes to the accessory dwelling. Comments were received from the county's environmental management agency, which included standard comments for water supply and onsite wastewater systems for any future construction of accessory dwellings. Comments were also received from the county public works department, which stated that the existing driveways are adequate to serve both of the proposed parcels and gave standard conditions requiring compliance with the county road, the stormwater quality and the grading and drainage ordinances, as well as the subdivision map act. Comments were also originally received from the Calaveras Consolidated Fire Protection District, but they had no conditions or concerns for this newest, most version, recent version of the map. So as I stated before, there was a biological resources assessment as well as an aquatic resources delineation that was prepared. There were California tiger salamander larvae that were observed in the pond. This is a manmade basin with a drainage ditch that redirects stormwater on the property to help avoid any flooding within the rest of the property. The assessment concluded that the pond provides suitable habitat for tiger salamander, but the basin and the drainage ditch were determined to be the focus of the aquatic resource delineation as there were no other potential aquatic resources observed in the project area. The planning department received a jurisdictional determination from the US Army Corps of Engineers, which concurred with the results of the aquatic resources delineation, which determined that the pond and the ditch are not waters of the US regulated under the Clean Water Act or the Rivers and Harbors Act. There will be no alteration to the pond in the northwest quarter, quarter of the property or the drainage ditch that feeds into it. As I stated previously, the public works is not requiring any improvements to the existing The US Fish and Wildlife Service reviewed both of the reports and the jurisdictional determination from the Army Corps and stated in their email that as the reports indicated that the area around the house, excuse me, around the accessory dwelling is highly disturbed and not suitable habitat, and there are conservation measures that were provided from their biological consultant to avoid impacts to tiger salamander, they concluded that it's reasonable to assume that take of the species will not occur. So pursuant to the California Environment Equality Act guidelines, an initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared and distributed for the 30-day comment period from June 28th to July 28th, 2024. There was a letter that was received from Caltrans with standard comments that did not apply to the project. No comments were received from the public or the adjacent neighbors. Potential impacts to the habitat for the California tiger salamander and to the western spade foot toad were identified and there is a mitigation monitoring and reporting program that was prepared and accepted by the applicant, which is incorporated, incorporated into the conditions of approval for this project, which reduces the potential impact to less than significant. There was a public hearing before the planning commission on September 12th this year. The commission approved both resolutions 2024-015 and 2024-016, which are in your attachments, recommending the board amend the zoning of the subject parcel to RA and approve the tentative parcel map. And there were no public comments given at the hearing. So to conclude, this project is consistent with general plan policies COS 3.1, 3.2, and 3.3, all of which require new development to protect biological resources by identifying and mitigating impacts to wildlife habitat and implementation measure COS-4, which requires project applicants to enlist the services of a qualified biologist to minimize, avoid, and/or mitigate significant impacts to special status species. The proposed tentative parcel map is consistent with the zoning code as the lots meet the minimum requirements for the RA zone property served by individual well and onsite wastewater systems. And there's no substantial evidence that the project is designed and conditioned will have a significant effect on the environment. The project has also been adequately conditioned in order to meet the applicable requirements of the county municipal code. And there were no concerns from many agencies and no comments were received in objection to the project from any of the adjacent landowners. And that concludes my presentation. There, the applicant's daughter, Lindsay Spur, is here, who has been the agent for processing. If you have any other specific questions about the parcel.
Thank you. We'll continue the, we are in a public hearing with the applicant, would you like to make a statement? Very well, sir. Any public comment that I would like to make a statement? Or any questions before I close the hearing and bring it back to the board for a motion? Questions up here. Supervisor Stopp, now your district.
We, we've had discussions with the owners and they, they understand the difference from A1 to RA and what they're allowed and can do on A1, RA is different zoning and what they can and can't do.
Yes.
They're aware of it.
Yes.
Okay, because I'm looking at some of the pictures.
Mm-hmm.
And that's maybe okay on A1, but when you go to RA, there's some restrictions on some of the things that could be going there.
With regards to the equipment that is onsite?
Some, and the number of vehicles that are there. You're now a residential ag.
Correct.
You're not.
Correct. So the number of vehicles hasn't changed a whole lot over the years. I'm not sure when the Holsworths purchased this property, I believe it was in the 80s, 86. There was a code case that was opened, I want to say 10, 15 years ago, that was closed. So the original case, their letter to the landowner was requiring that they remove the vehicles. And then after further discussions between the landowner and code compliance, the determination was made that as, you know, as long as they were just using it for their hobby and that you could not see any of the vehicles from the road, the case was closed. And because the case was closed and they're using it as a hobby, it sort of falls into a permitted use as long as they're residing onsite.
Even though it's changing to RA, because I, I'll, I'll say this, you may have not got any complaints, but I have got a couple complaints between yesterday and this morning. And that was concerning vehicles.
I don't know that the change in RA from A1 would affect the vehicles. There are some limitations on what they can do from agricultural perspective between A1 and RA, but the abandoned or unused vehicles would apply the same to either zone, as far as I'm aware.
Okay. And, and the number of vehicles was on a 20 acre parcel. Now they're splitting it to two 10s. So that would change some of what you were saying back was, because it's no longer a 20 acre parcel.
Yes.
So, and I'm, you know, so I'm just questioning it now before we move forward.
Yeah.
Because I've got a couple of complaints about it being to RA and now two 10 acre parcels. So.
Okay.
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 It's not that I'm, I'm not against it, I just want to make sure that they're aware there could, there could be some things that they could be facing maybe, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Public comments online at the hearing?
We have no online public comment.
All right. I am closing the public hearing and bringing it back to the board.
I will move this item, Mr. Chair.
By Supervisor Stopp now.
Second.
By Supervisor Stopp, all in favor?
Aye.
Close carries 5-0. And we'll move on to item 21.
And my same presentation for the same item, both are being presented together.
Very well. Is there any public comment on this item? Item 21. Very well. Bring it back to the board, is there a motion?
So moved.
Supervisor Stopp now, second by.
So second.
Second by. Second by Supervisor Stopp. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carries five, zero. Thank you, Madeline.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madeline.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to supervisor announcements. Supervisor Hubbard.
Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, I attended the CMCAA meeting in San Andreas. I wanted to shout out on the second for the health fair. That was pretty tremendous here on campus. Thursday, the third, I attended the Area Twelve Agency on Aging meeting.
Thank you. Supervisor Follendorf.
Yes. Reminder tomorrow at four-thirty at the San Andreas Town Hall, there will be a public workshop on the Calaveras Coordinated Transportation Plan, and that is from four-thirty to six o'clock.
Supervisor Toffenelli.
It's four-thirty to six o'clock, yeah. I attended CMAA with Supervisor Martin in place of Supervisor Follendorf. And that's all I have to report at this time.
Thank you. Supervisor Stopp.
Wait.
Gary?
The COG meeting was canceled, so we did not have an October COG meeting. It's carried over to November and it had to do with no air conditioning in the boardroom. Technical difficulties.
So.
Not then.
No, well, see, the secondary place for meeting was technical difficulties and those are initials are Ben Stopp's.
So we'll just blame the whole thing on Ben Stopp.
That's the truth. That's the way it's always been since Windjack.
Since you first got to Mokel as a kid.
Other than that, my, 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 other, it's the truth. Everyone's like, who did that? Anyways, my report.
Very well. I want to report that Lumberjack Days was a big success. I want to compliment the town of West Point, putting on a good show. Once again, and Public Works for helping out on all the traffic stops and things that go on. A successful day. So thank you to everybody up country. Madam CEO.
So Supervisor Hubbard, you mentioned our health fair. I'd like to give a shout out to our human resources department. They put a ton of time and effort into that. It was a very successful event, including we were able to provide flu shots for our employees for the upcoming flu season. So I feel like that was very worthwhile.
Thank you. Madam Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
Susan?
I have one more comment.
Supervisor Toffenelli.
We talked about next meeting here and we were going to donate and do a thing like we did last year for Resource Connection and a little bit of competition with the clerk's office. Last year, we all gave a hundred dollars and then admin took and went and bought all kinds of food for us on display. So, and we all, I think, gave five hundred dollars from our accounts. Is that correct?
Right, from the board discretion.
And that was just a monetary.
That was a check.
Yeah, check, monetary check. So are we all still in favor of doing all of that?
We discussed with Food Bank, I think it's a great idea. They would prefer cash versus purchases. They feel they can get more paying for their buck. So it's not as impressive, but.
Okay, but we have competition with them, so that's why I thought we would give them a twenty-five-hundred-dollar check and then, but it's up to the board. Whatever you guys want to do, it's fine with me. I will try and buy some food to put it out there.
I would, Supervisor Hubbard, did you?
I just give cash.
I, I'm going to stick with what they need. I hate advocating victory.
Okay, so then here's, here's what I'm going to do. If we're all going to give cash, I'll succeed to the clerk's office and.
Well, we need to come up with a theme then, a different theme for decoration.
Here's what I thought, maybe then we're going to do that, which is fine. I can get a bunch of play money and just throw a bunch of play money down there.
We could attach all the dollars to us and then they have to come pull them all off or something. Sorry, Bill. Actually, we could pull them all with Ben.
No, don't do that.
All right. So we're going to stick with cash and Gary's going to buy some food because he's not willing to, he's not willing just to surrender to these guys.
I just, we have a competition going, so that's fine. I'll figure something else out. I'll give cash. That's what everybody wants to do.
And I think it's a great idea, Gary, and feeding our, feeding our residents and helping out the Food Bank, they do great work and the least we can do. So everybody's on the hook for Benjamin.
Clerk's office, you're off the hook.
Oh, wow. We were scared.
Clerk's office is always off the hook.
We have skeletons. I mean, we'll have a display, it just won't be in competition on your guys' food thing over there.
We promised not to bring out all the skeletons in the closets. Okay. Is there, is, is there anything, anything else from the board? Very well. We stand adjourned.
Thank you, Chair.